Having one secretary and removing the second person. So when, when the students are eating breakfast and that person has to be in the lunchroom doing the nutrition responsibilities, there would be no secretary in the office. There would only be a principal who might be meeting with a parent, sitting in on an IEP meeting, dealing with discipline with a student. So when another student comes in and needs the nurse, if it's not the day the halftime nurse is there, there would be nobody to serve that student. If a parent showed up and rang the buzzer to come in the building, there would be no one left in that office to assist and, and monitor the security of the building. So the reason we said zero is this is just not practical. When you look at the overall functions of the office and when you look at how other districts are doing it, they have multiple people to be able to help them. And as Mr. Hogan said, the fact that we happen to call both of our secretaries does not seem like a good reason to make a change.
So if, if that's in case the way they look at it, then we should be extraordinarily efficient in other areas, showing that we, we show cost savings dramatically in our...
Say nutrition.
Or our support staff.
If the LPA had done an analysis of our clerks, we'd be really efficient.
But they didn't audit that or what?
Their purpose was not to tell us what we were doing well. Their purpose was to identify.
Well, I would like to ask for the complete report.
We, we've provided all of the documentation in attachments form, our analysis, the staff that we've identified, we provided all that to LPA.
And that, and that was probably one of our biggest frustrations, is we tried to take a holistic look and learn from this because if we can be more efficient, those are dollars we can invest into important things that make a difference with students. But we didn't believe it would make sense to render our buildings basically unable to operate by making this kind of a cap. And, and that's, I guess, where our points of disagreement have come about. But I wanted you to know why we said this was a zero in, in terms of the saving estimate because we don't believe we could realistically make that choice and still have those school offices function.
Well, I would assume that if we saw the complete report, we would show a cost savings that would exceed two hundred to two thousand somewhere in our support staff, in our clerk staff, or whatever you want to label it. It just, that's, I don't know how to take this data because it's partial, it's part of the report. I, that's not the way you look at something.
What I think is really encouraging is to take the report and the discussions and the work that's been done to dig deeper into the items that they have identified and really found the fact that we're, we've got a lot to be proud of.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I don't want the community or anyone else to say, hey, we're, you know, look what we're wasting on secretaries, or we have too much administrative staff in our district, or whatever the case may be. I just don't, it's hard to put any value.
And that's why we've tried to take a more holistic look. We've tried to do a more comprehensive and more detailed analysis. Unfortunately, they, I mean, they point blank told us on this.
They would not give us a complete report.
We're, we're looking at secretaries. That's all our analysis is focusing on.
Just secretaries.
Just secretaries.
Kind of secretaries.
So.
And that's not unusual for audits. You can't do everything all the time. So what they did was pick some things, they identified them, we had created an issue to dig deeper and, and actually compare apples to apples. And I think it just makes us look great. Now, it's unfortunate that there'll be data out there or information.
That doesn't make us look great.
Right. It, it is easily misinterpreted.
That's what my frustration is.
But fortunately, and I, and I think it's coming out well in the information presented here, I'm not sure how we can append it to this kind of thing and make sure in every arena, including those that matter from a policy standpoint, except this arena right here, and confirm that we're doing a great job. But I think with the data that's staff has put together, together with the approach of, of, of the audit, there's a lot to be proud of in the halls of the legislature and with our fellow school districts regarding how we're doing business.
And, and, and I'll share with the board too. I mean, I've talked to three of the superintendents who went through this process and they, they faced similar, similar situation. And again, I think it's a limitation of the process as Mark mentioned. So it has caused us to take a deeper look and, and I think Mark says it well, we've got a lot to be proud of.
Well, I think frustrating to me with this was when I read with regard to a quote that was said to you, I believe, about using this money and putting it into the classroom. And I guess my question to them would be with regard to, well, how is it not impacting the student in the classroom? I mean, for that matter, let's get rid of Mr. Stillian. I mean, why do we need a transportation department? That's not the classroom. Of course, how are we going to get the kids to the classroom? But that's not part of the classroom. These individuals are working for those kids when we don't have a full-time counselor and they're, they may be the first ones, you know, line of defense there for a kid who's being bullied. They're the first line of defense. I know from experience at Jenny Barker, when my kid needs an inhaler after gym and worries us to get that taken care of, I don't see how we could be more efficient. And that money is impacting kids in the classroom because they're, those positions are getting kids back into the classroom again so they can deal with what, you know, they're dealing with the immediate need and then combines the next level if that next level is needed. So I just, I don't, when somebody says it's not impacting the student in the classroom, how is it not impacting the student in the classroom is, I guess, my question for them. Sorry, my soapbox.
The next recommendation by LPA was to reduce or eliminate the district's lead buyback policy. This incentive encourages good employee attendance and increased teacher advertisers have a negative effect on student retention. The LPA also indicated in their report that there was no evidence that this type of benefit is effective in improving attendance or retaining employees. So we dug a little bit on our own again. So we have a single sheet there that has some blue graphs on it. And part of the discussion Dr. Karlin shared with you earlier and a frustration was the timeliness of, of the audit and us not being able to sit down and go through some of this material. And I think this is an example of one of those. So that's listed in the report as there is no evidence to show this as a benefit. So we went ahead and conducted, after of course we had to turn in our information because it was so last minute as these things were being thrown at us, we conducted our own survey. So the survey was, we surveyed 120 employees that have taken advantage of the lead buyback policy in the last four years. Of those 120 that were sent out, we had 90 responses back, 55 certified and 35 classified and administration. They were grouped together and for the purposes of our survey with two simple questions. One was if we didn't offer this benefit, would you have used more sick leave? And the second was, does providing this benefit have any influence or impact on retaining you with our school district? So of those responses, we had 31% of our certified staff or 56.36% say yes, they would have used more sick leave had we not had this in place. And as far as our impact on retaining, which is something that we are certainly focused on at this time, 61.82% of our certified staff said that this does impact their decision to remain in our school system. In addition to that, savings from reducing this benefit would be offset with the cost of hiring substitutes specifically for our certified staff. It's close to probably a one-to-one correlation there. And at this time, the district combines to implement this recommendation because it's not in the best interest of our staff and students. We had a little bit of discrepancy in terms of the amount of savings. LPA's is 30,000 to 100,000. Our estimate is anywhere between 40,000 and 45,000 because again, some of the expenses are offset by having to pay a substitute if that teacher is gone versus paying for all the buyback.
Okay, can we, well, can we comment on this one? So Dr. Karlin, you've been listening to some presentations and I think one of the things that you've been trying to hammer into us as well is that the classroom teacher is the most important person in a child's life. So if we're getting more individuals staying in the classroom, I'll be laying on my room and sneezing if they're sitting on the commitee, but wouldn't that have a huge impact on kids in the classroom?
Absolutely. And that's, that's, that's one of the reasons we see this benefit as important. And also put out there, we would rather incentivize the kind of positive behaviors that we would like to see than to try to deal other ways with absenteeism. So when you look at our mission and our vision of creating a culture of a place where people want to be and want to work, that seems to be, make much more sense to us than, than to try to handle absenteeism in other ways. This is one of those, those Mr. Hogan pointed out, we acknowledge the district could save 40,000 to 45,000 if we did this differently. We don't think it's consistent with the mission of what we're trying to do or what makes sense for having teachers having substitutes and there is not the same as having a regular classroom teacher.
We also don't know if we could see those savings because it's part of an negotiated agreement.
Yeah, that is correct. And we also explained to LPA that in addition to the lead buyback to help offset or help increase the attendance of our staff, that we have other concerns that we are trying to do and will continue to explore ways to improve that attendance of our staff.
Something that we even noticed that, so what could be something that we could even discuss this year?
Not at the time of this happening.
The next LPA recommendation is a reduction or change in our cell phone policy. LPA recommended reducing or eliminating the district's cell phone stipend. Currently, we pay cell phone stipends that average $61 a month. These stipends primarily are 40 or 80 dollars to an employee depending on if they need to have access to email. Obviously, we want all these people that receive a stipend to be available to us by phone. Some of them do want to have access to email until they get the larger stipend. So they basically gave us this recommendation in two pieces. One would be to reduce the amount of the stipend. We reviewed what we're currently paying and we believe that they are in line with local provider costs. We also went back and we looked, when we were reviewing prior reports that LPA had done, back in 2015, LPA's report, or May's USD 266 stated that the average cost of cell phone service was 76 dollars. So by their own previous report at 76 dollars for an average cost, our 61 dollars is in line with the average cost of cell phone service. So when we looked at reducing that rate, we felt like we were pretty in line with what the local provider costs were and what the average cost of cell services across the state. The second way that they wanted to address cell phone stipends was to, instead of paying a stipend, move to a, move to the state contract and provide district cell phones. And what we could do under, that would actually create a little bit more of an administrative burden because now every month the cell phone bill is going to have to be reviewed by someone to make sure we don't have personal calls, we don't have some overages and fees that need to be reimbursed by an employee, what happens when the phone breaks, you only have one or two people that are probably able to go down to the local provider and say, hey, I need some help with this phone. We have a wide variety of people who, some people are fine with the older model that would be free, some people will always want the newest, greatest, latest technology that's come out, how do we deal with that? Everyone has a little bit different way that they use their phone. So how would we deal with all those differences? One of the other things that LPA mentioned was that in their calculation of the savings, they estimated that 75% of the people who offered the option to have a district-wide cell phone would reject that cell phone because they didn't want to carry two phones. The district, when we looked at that, we had a hard time swallowing that because that goes against the positive culture that the administration and the Board of Education has wanted, has already established in the district. We don't want people using their personal phone, their personal dime to create, to use for business purposes. So we had a little bit of a problem with that. So while we do recognize that there, first of all, there is a difference in the LPA savings estimate. They say 25 to 60,000. We calculated a difference of 16 to 17,000, adding in for administrative costs that employees and, and staff would have to do. We do think that we could save 16 to 17,000 dollars a year if we changed our policy on cell phones. But this is probably one of those times when we think that 16 to 17,000 dollars is money well spent, time savings for our employees, and then also just more efficient overall. And so maybe in this particular case, it's another example of efficiency isn't necessarily defined in terms of just dollars. Our staff's time and personal time is worth something as well. The next recommendation addresses the district's excess storage space and accumulation of unused items. And we actually agree with the auditors on this one. We have storage all over four to five different places and throughout the district where we have a lot of unused items. And so LPA recommended selling the former New Outlook Academy and developing strategies to dispose of unused items. We agree. In the past, we've used traditional options, we've tried some online avenues to generate revenues to sell those surplus properties. We do think that for a one-time additional income, we can put the New Outlook on the market and sell it and then explore options to centralize our storage and not have storage all over the district. That's something we'll have to study in order to make the storage space happen, but we do agree that the LPA savings estimate in terms of the excess storage is 8,000 dollars per year. We agree with that.
But just for a point of clarity, that third bullet, have an online avenue to sell, auctions and online avenues to sell surplus property, we're not talking about the New Outlook building?
No, yeah.
We're talking about the furniture and equipment kind of things that are contained in it.
The next recommendation, LPA recommended attracting and reimbursing based on actual mileage resident providing a monthly stipend. We feel like this is going to create, increase burden with our employees and also in our accounting department. This type of approach is very similar to what happens in other government agencies such as provisions for meals, travel, lodging. Any cost savings that we would see would be reduced due to an additional administrative overhead, similar to the same function that KJ mentioned previously. If someone's going to have to monitor that, an employee's going to have to keep logs, keeping those logs, turning them in, getting that turned around in a timely manner is going to cost some additional time. And this benefit is then offered to attract and retain quality employees and remain competitive with other parts of the state and country. And again, I think it's, it's compensation that we provide for our staff, again, building back the culture of, of wanting to be supportive of them. Our district spans quite a ways and in different directions and so that's something that at this point, we don't see us implementing any change at this time. The difference in the staff, the LPA savings estimate, 30,000 versus ours is totally based on that administrative costs that would be applied to trying to manage a change like this.
If I could, I'm sorry. Some of this infrastructure travel cost, I mean, when I think that, I think about those of you in the room traveling from school to school. But that's not what it's all about because we have speech.
Teacher's speech.
Thank you. I was, Mark, yeah, SLPs who travel, we've got music teachers who travel, we've got lots of people who travel. So having to fill out a mileage log during their planned time when they should be focusing on the kids in the classroom is going to just be that much more of a burden when they already have to travel and they're losing time anyway, correct?
That's right. Some of our people do mileage logs. It depends on how much travel they do.
But that's a fair option. If you go with the stipend or whatever.
No, it's not an option for us. Some, some have to do mileage log, I believe is our.
That's correct. Well, a lot of the travel that we do is not about short trips, not a few long trips through the U C P. It's many very short trips.
And they're, and those many short trips are regular, you know, they may have the same schedule every week. For the people that are on the side, which are going to be more fable, not necessarily visit the same buildings on a regular, on a regular schedule.
The last one is quite interesting, that LPA did recommend considering closing Jenny Barker Elementary School. And we put the word consider in here on purpose because that's what they shared with us during the conference call. We are, we would like you to consider this, but we really aren't necessarily recommending you do it. So our question was, well then, why ask us to consider it if it's really not a recommendation? It was, it was, caused a lot of discussion among our group. One thing that we do know is that closing Jenny Barker would eliminate nine classrooms. The district and the LPA actually too, did project a loss of student enrollment if we closed that building. We would project that a lot of people would go to neighboring districts or schools. We did note to the LPA that our district does continue to grow specifically to the northeast part of town and as a district, our enrollment is growing. And again, the board stresses over and over again that we want to reduce elementary class size, so by eliminating nine buildings and moving those into town would actually increase class size. The next bullet was also telling, the LPA gave us projected cost savings. We took those projections and we, we did actuals and sent them back to us because as you know, they actually have a half of an administrator, they have part of a coach, part of a librarian. So we actually took the true costs and provided that into the response and they still didn't consider that in their, in their savings estimate. One thing to note too, was just at a recent board meeting, I believe, we talked about at some point, the board will be looking at the reorganizational plan and so that could affect how many elementary classrooms we really do have in the district versus middle school and high school. And so at some point, if we reduce elementary classrooms, we'll have to have that additional space to accommodate. If you look down the road in order from what, what the projected savings are, it would take 20 to 25 years for a return on investment in terms of what you needed to build a new elementary school to accommodate. So we don't really see a cost savings there. Again, we don't believe this is in the best interest of the students. We don't plan to implement this change and our LPA estimate versus our cost estimate, our isn't, isn't really an estimate, ours is based on more actuals.
So this last page is basically a summary of their, their recommendations. I should point out, there are a few other recommendations that didn't include cost savings, some management kind of things, and, and those are contained in our written, in our written response. The district will be addressing and making sure those issues are, are appropriately addressed. But this is an estimate of the things that have a summary of the, of the, of the different cost savings recommendations that they've given. So you can see if you, if you substitute the numbers that we went over with you, there's considerable difference. LPA recommends identifies about 1.3 to 1.9 million, we identify 614,000 to 913,000. We, again, you know, Ms. Scott shared with you that in the exit conference, they said, we don't really recommend this, but we're going to include it in the report because we think you should consider it. And that's in reference to closing Jenny Barker. So, you know, we think that one was, was kind of dead on arrival and we really questioned why that was included in the report. So if you remove that and then you add up the 378,000 dollars worth of efficiencies that we are going to implement as a result of this process, that leaves us with about 136 to 315,000 dollars of recommendations that, that we believe by our analysis, savings that's left on the table. And those are things like the IT where we don't believe it's in our best interest to centralize that IT staff. But we acknowledge if we chose to do that, we could save some dollars. I want to put this in the perspective way, and this kind of goes to Mark's comment about what we should be proud of. That 136,000 to 315,000, that's 0.15% to 0.35% of our overall budget in this district. So the fact that we're operating at that level of efficiency, I think is a compliment to everything that we've done in this district. And you notice in my remarks, and I shared similar remarks with the committee, I talked about the board, the administration, and the staff. And the reason that the staff is included, the staff is the group that has borne the results of our efforts to operate efficiently. They're the ones who are taking on multiple jobs, even though that wasn't in my job description before. And now we don't have a full-time nurse, so who gets delegated the responsibility, those nursing responsibilities, when the nurse isn't available, it becomes that secretary. It becomes, other responsibilities become the role of the classroom teacher. The custodians take on more time in the lunchrooms. The custodians take on delivering the freight from the offices that comes there because they don't get to spend their whole day just doing routine cleaning. So it truly is the staff that have, have really made our district operate efficiently. And, and so while we will continue to strive to operate efficiently and we will look to find ways that we can, you know, there's some takeaways from this audit that have been very good for us. And we're going to, the tool that, that the district's come up with, with custodial staffing levels, I think John's attention, is to continue to refine that and use that. And that will be a very helpful tool as we move forward and, and make necessary adjustments. We have something now that's based on a national benchmark and we feel pretty good about that. So there's, there's some real good takeaways, but I think the, the big disagreement we had here was, I think we, we feel like the report may have overstated the amount of savings, the amount of efficiencies that are out there. And lastly, what I want to leave you with is, we learned a lesson a few years ago in transportation, or I did, and, and I think we've mentioned this before, but in the transition between directors at one of the points, one of our new directors came in and saw that we had 28 route bus drivers. And so as they prepared the bus routing for that coming year, they built the routes on 28. What that new director didn't understand was we had always had 33 route drivers before, but five of the jobs were unfilled and the mechanics and the secretaries were driving those routes. So when we started the year, we started the year with 28 plant, 28 drivers. We had kids on the bus for almost two hours. From a cost standpoint, we were very efficient. We didn't have those driving positions filled, but we couldn't provide the services that our kids needed. So that year, that fall, we had to contract with some drivers from Wichita to get out here and, and get things under control and now we're back staffed at the level that we should be at. So while we are going to strive to be efficient, it's not always about cost alone. We really have to look and make sure that we're also providing the services that are needed. And I think that was a, that was a, certainly a learning experience for all of us as, as we worked with the audit. So with that, yeah, does the board have any questions?
Where do we go with the issue? You guys met on the front of the street here, but what happened now?
We, we really don't need any formal action from the board. If the board believes we need to do something different, you can take action along those lines, but this, this was put out there for review from you, for you. This is, this is our plan, is the administration on carrying forward. So if you're comfortable with it, you leave it how it lies. If you want us to do something different, then, then we discuss that. If you want us to do something different, then, then we discuss that.
Well, I appreciate everything that they provided to us and the information and the notes. That it kind of reminds me that we're all experts on how other people should conduct their business. And sometimes we miss things and we don't get quite the same look at it as the people who are actually involved. And I think that's really why we need local control of school districts. Because I think we, we serve the community that we're going to do it the best that we can. But there are aspects of that that might not fit in another district or in another place. And, and that's why it's important that, that we have the flexibility to, to do the best we can in our district or our community. And I think that would be, so we think we'd be different than what some of the things that are replaced. But it's appropriate and it's the right thing to do for our, our community. Thank you for all of your incredible support and you did that for us, hours and days of effort.
And I'd like to pass that on. These folks, Roxy's and her staff, John and his staff principals, I mean, there are hundreds of man-hours into this process. And so, we wish them.
I think y'all deserve it.
In the paycheck, but I do appreciate it.
Although they might call paycheck.
I want to.
Well, I think we're moving to open the session.
I have something. I, I apologize. I missed the last meeting. I was ill. But I did watch it on YouTube. And, you know, I was a little, I guess the perspective of watching the board meeting instead of being at a board meeting is completely different. And I, I was surprised by a few things. I, first of all, I think it's great that Dr. Hanigan and we, like some of the community members had it, had an interest and felt like it was a safe place to come and share their thoughts about changing the start time of the schools. But I was a little set back by the discussion that happened afterwards as far as, specifically on the topic of, did we as a board and a district do our, do everything we could to communicate with the public before we made that decision? And as a, as a board member myself, when I voted to do, to support the change, at the time I held my hand in the air, I had already answered that question that we had done everything, all the diligence that we needed to do in order to make that decision. And so, I felt confident raising my hand. And at the end of the board meeting and during this open discussion time, there was a lot of comments made about how we failed to communicate properly and thoroughly enough over the, gosh, year and a half that we were discussing this. And I don't, I guess I don't understand that. And I don't understand that, how we failed. Because I, I think we did a good job communicating. If there's a positive or a constructive way of saying, you know, maybe we should have done something differently or we missed a certain group of people, then I understand that. But I don't know what we could have done more to communicate that. And I don't know who I'm asking that question to. Maybe the board members who thought we didn't communicate well with the public. But, you know, once we made that decision, I kind of thought that we were all behind that decision. I don't know. Yeah.
You know, I, I just, I really appreciate the people that we have on staff and on this board. Because I think each one applies their perspectives and their knowledge to whatever we're discussing. And whether it's kindergarten readiness or start times, whatever we're discussing, I think, I, I for one seem, I have observed that we tend to look back in on ourselves and evaluate a pretty good job of whether we have done what we thought we were doing, what the community expected, and certainly what the results require, or where we're trying to go. And so, I thought the conversation was healthy. Not only what was presented to us on that topic, but, but in our introspection on, on whether we did a good job and how could we do it better next time? So, I think that, to me, was the takeaway, was, was there something here that didn't happen that we could have done a better job on? And next time, we have consideration of something, as Jean so appropriately pointed out, affects every person in the district, maybe we can do a better job of communicating. It may be different then because maybe tweets will be a new, have a new powerful tool or something. But I just took away from that conversation, sort of that question to ourselves, could we have done a better job? And that's sort of what you were raising.
Yeah. I just don't know what, I mean, is there something we could have done better? Did, did anyone come up with a solution of what we could have done better? I mean, short of looking back, I think we should have a sugar beet recorder at the press table. You know? And that's, this is good, valid, adult, actual reporting. And I think that that would be a good way to get what the board's talking about into the eyes and ears of the student body, which would help. Because I just don't, you know, I felt, I felt from an outside perspective, a little bit like we threw administration out of the bus, honestly. Because I think administration and us, we did a lot to communicate. Because it doesn't get heard, doesn't mean we should take responsibility for not communicating well.
No, it, isn't it just a question of how we get to a better?
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. Let's talk about, but I didn't hear in the discussion that we, we should have done A, B, C. I heard we should have communicated better. And to me, that felt a little bit like, yeah, in a way. I don't know, because we, I felt like we did a lot, we talked about it in every faculty meeting. I just felt like it was an, almost an over-massage topic. And it's frustrating when the community doesn't know about what's going on. But other than knocking on doors, I don't know really what we could have done.